Good evening, this is a public meeting of the Lowell zoning Board of Appeals for December 8, 2014. Before we get started, if everyone could check their electronic device, make sure it's either turned down or turned off, please. And if anyone here plans on speaking on behalf of a petition and addressing the board, if you could sign in with your name and address, please, at the podium. First matter before us is under new business, this is ZB 2014-65, the petitions are variance, the applicant is Christina Voight, property located at 16 Hazel Street. And the petition, the applicant is seeking variances to exceed the front yard setback requirement, as well as the floor area ratio requirement. The petitioner is seeking relief under Section 5.1 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. Received a communication from the petitioner, just read it into the record. As per conversation today with Joe Genowitz, kindly place our case number ZB 2014-65 to the next hearing date of January 12, 2015. And seeing as we have that written in, could I have a motion to continue January 12, 2015?
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a motion to continue ZB 2014-065, 16 Hazel Street, for variance to next meeting, January 12, 2015?
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Continue to January 12, 2015.
Mr. McCarthy?
Continue.
Mr. Pallia?
Continue.
Mr. Peck?
Continue to January 12.
Mr. Perrin?
Continue to January 12, 2015.
Okay, is the petitioner for Chelmsford Street here? Okay, we're going to jump to our next petition then. Next petition is ZB 2014-67, the petitions are variance, the property is located at 33 White Street, and the petition, variance for a driveway setback from an existing building pursuant to Section 6.1, 1 of the zoning ordinance.
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
Sure, if you need to fix that mic. Hi.
Hi, how are you? Good evening, and thank you for-
I'm doing great, I'm a little cold, but I'm doing great. What would you like to tell us about your petition, ma'am?
Well, I've been in this house for 30 years, I bought it in 1984. And for about the last 15 years, I've used the side of the house as a driveway with gravel stones, crushed stone. And at this point, it's very hard to remove snow.
Sure.
Elderly, and I am disabled now. So, I'm requesting that there be a relief of the variance requirement. I guess the house beside us doesn't meet the setback, is that the proper lingo? So, we're short a couple of feet, so we weren't able to get a driveway put in that would be easier to clear off.
Sure.
Especially with, I have a lot of orthopedic and back issues, and I require a cane and sometimes a walker.
Yep.
So, we're requesting that we could have a paved driveway put in for snow removal, and make it easier to, and safer, to get in and out of vehicles. I do live on a very narrow street, and it's very difficult to park on there, especially in the winter. So, like I said, for many years, we've been using the side of that house as a driveway. But at this point in time, it's very difficult. My husband is elderly, I am disabled, and we're requesting that relief.
Sure, okay. So, pretty much what you're proposing is take the existing driveway that you have today and remove what's there and repave it? That's the plan, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Anything else you'd like to tell us? If not, I'll, we're going to open it up to the public, but if there's anything else you'd like to-
If I may have David Biati speak, please?
Sure, absolutely, yep.
Good evening, David Biati with Greater Lowell Engineering, and I produce the plan, I think that accompanies the application. We're attempting to propose a six-and-a-half-foot wide driveway, which will meet the lot line setback, a three-foot lot line setback in the zone. However, we're a little bit short, obviously, from the building setback. I think we probably got about a foot and a quarter of setback, as opposed to the three feet. So, we are looking for consideration for exemption from that requirement.
Correct, correct, yep. And that's, I believe, the comment we received from the city in regards to what their observations were, so, okay, anything else?
I do have the neighbor with me that is actually the other side of the house, next door, so he's here if you'd like to speak with him as well.
Okay, well, if you have nothing else to add, we're going to open it up to the public, so he has an opportunity to come up. Anyone here that likes to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor? Yeah, you're in favor, okay. All right, and you obviously live to the right of the driveway, right, sir?
I'm the owner of the property.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone like to speak in opposition? Opposition, opposition? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Can I open it up to the board? Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions about the petition. I agree with the parking situation. When I went out there on Saturday to take a look at the site, I had a hard time finding a place to park on the street without blocking someone's driveway, so obviously it'll be easier for you to use when the driveway is paved instead of the gravel. And I don't have any issue with granting the foot and three-quarters of relief on the property side, as long as we're maintaining the three feet from the butter, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good project, and it's always a good thing when you get the neighbors' butters to support it, so I think this is a good project. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I saw that there are other properties nearby that seem to be struggling with the same conditions. The properties behind you seem to have satisfied the parking scenario, but they seem to have paved everything. They seem to have paved right up to the house, and maybe even to the setbacks, so at least you're honoring green space there, which would be a nice thing to achieve. But I just want to do the math here and understand exactly what you're going for, because some of the documentation here just seems to be a little misleading. So, right now, you have a dimension from your house to the property line of 12 feet? Is that what it is? Or do we have an overall dimension there?
From the house to the property line is approximately 10.8 feet.
10.8. Okay. And what is the required width for a parking space or driveway?
Well, I think it's technically a minimum of eight feet. But I think there is potential special considerations for possible reduction there, I'm not exactly certain.
Sure, sure. Most cars these days are roughly five feet wide, and so you're looking for a six-foot, or is it six-and-a-half-foot parking space width? Which gives you roughly a foot and a half to get out of your car onto a paved surface from your car width.
They have a Honda and a Toyota, with a little bit more of a reduced width of wheel base.
Okay, it's still not much, and that's kind of putting the wheels right on the edge there. So, I want to ask Joe, is that correct that we have an eight-foot width for a parking lot, parking space width?
That's correct, the typical width requirement is eight feet.
So, are we looking for any variation or variance, or special permit on that as well?
Yes, that'd be an additional variance, yes.
So, as I understand it, we're looking for a variance from the setback requirement from the building to the parking space?
Correct.
From being reduced from three feet to one and a half feet?
Correct, yep.
And then we're also looking for an additional variance for the reduction in the parking space width?
Correct, from eight to six and a half.
From eight feet to six and a half, okay. Got it, okay, now it all makes sense. All right, I understand, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Gary?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I did go by the site, and the off-street parking there is nil. Everyone has the permit parking signs out in front of their house. Is that a commercial space to your left? Left of your house, it's a commercial, is that a commercial drive?
I'm not sure what the specific zoning is.
Like an open parking lot to your left, so I see the hardship on your side. I did see a Toyota truck in the driveway that had ample space, and as you move forward, I think the need to move forward paving is in the best interest. You've been with that house for 30 years, so anytime we can help residents, long-term residents in the city, I think it's a good thing, so I wish you the best of luck moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I share the same sentiments with the fellow board members. I did have a chance to go over the property myself, and it is a very tight squeeze for everybody over there, so I think it seems to be a fairly decent project, and I wish you best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Joe, they'll be pulling a permit for this driveway also, correct?
Correct, they'll need a paving permit with the engineering office.
Right, so if they have any issues with, I guess, the contour, or the slope, or anything, they'll take it up with this gentleman then?
With the engineering department, correct, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm in agreement with my board members, there's a good intention here, I think it makes sense for what you'd like to do, granting the two variances. Again, if we look at the conditions that somebody has to make with the prerequisites, I don't, as far as the public good and the intent of the zoning, I don't see either one of them being disrupted by this petition, so with that said, I would like to make a motion, please.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2014-0067, for a variance for 33 White Street. The first variance is for reduction in required driveway width from eight feet to 6.5 feet. And the second variance, Joe, can we do that together?
Sure.
Okay, and the second variance is for reduction in setback requirements from building to parking space from three feet to 1.24 feet.
Have a second.
Second motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Approve with conditions.
Mr. McCarthy?
Approve.
Mr. Pallia?
Approved.
Mr. Peck?
Approve.
Mr. Perrin?
Approve with conditions.
Okay, been approved, wish you the best of luck, and thank you, sir, for showing up and showing support to your neighbor, appreciate that.
Thank you, members of the board.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Good night, yep. Okay, we're going to entertain Chelmsford Street, if, is there a representative of Chelmsford Street here?
No.
Oh, that's all right, that's right, hey, take your time, you know? I'd keep my coat on if I was you. Yeah, we did the other petition first, so our next matter before us is ZB 2014-66, the petitions for variance, property is located at 900 Chelmsford Street, and the petition, special permit for illuminated signs pursuant to Section 6.3.29D of the zoning ordinance, variances for freestanding signs pursuant to Section 6.3.28B, 6.3.28C, and 6.3.28D of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Sorry, I'm a little late.
Nope, that's okay, and so you were here approximately a month or so ago, maybe six weeks, or whatever?
Six weeks, yes.
Okay, so-
So, this is phase two of our new signing program.
So, if you want to explain to us the purpose of the petition?
Sure. The first one is, we're proposing a new monument signage on Chelmsford Street, in the existing footprint, that it is just going taller to kind of be in scale with the buildings. Then, we're proposing a second monument sign on Industrial Ave, which it does not exist currently, just to give it some street presence coming in from that route. And then there's some interior directory signage along the building as well, within the property. Directory signage is being at the end of the entranceway on Chelmsford Street, and some building recognition signage throughout the property as well, to indicate which tower you're heading towards. And those are the signs proposed at this time.
Okay, so, pretty much, we're going to continue the same, I'll call it theme, that same type of, I know we saved some-
Same color theme.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
And so, really, is there anything different? I know, obviously, the signage is different, but it's pretty much the same, same theme, same intention?
The streets facing monument signs will be lit within, so you can see better, and also have some signage opportunities for the movie theater and the new tenants that, or existing tenants that will be in the building. So, there'll be some street recognition for them.
Okay. Will this be the last set of signage that might be proposed, or are you anticipating any other changes?
I believe this is what we have it for now, but that may change come springtime when things start to thaw, but other than that, I believe this will be the end of it.
Yeah, and I only asked because you were in here once before, so just curious, okay. Anything else like that?
No, do you?
Okay.
Okay.
Great. All right, going to open it up to the public, anyone here that likes to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of the hearing is closed. Anyone here that likes to speak in opposition? Opposition, opposition? Hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Going to open it up to the board. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the petitioner, I have one, I have a comment and a question. The comment is on the new monument sign, which I've always thought for people that, even though you can see the towers, the very short sign that's been there for years is almost, you almost can't see it or recognize it if you don't know, you know, what you're looking for. So, I think that will be another good addition to the rebranding of the complex. The question I have is, and maybe you could explain them again, because you didn't mention it just now. I'll call them the giant numbers that are going to sit on, looks like, they look more like sculptures than-
Yes.
-signs, and they're eight feet tall by almost four feet wide, is that, am I reading that right?
Yes. Those are concepts currently, the final design has not been vetted out yet, so it's just more of the sizing on what dimensions we can go with, and then we'll design around that aspect. But I've heard some people that like the big giant numbers, and I've heard others that are not so, it's not their cup of tea.
So, Joe, would we be, excuse me, would we be approving those tonight too, as part of the total application?
Yes. Yeah, they would be considered freestanding signs under our ordinance, so, yeah, that's included in the application package.
Okay. Well, I'd like to maybe hear more from my other board members, just what they, I'm just having trouble wrapping my head around the giant, you know, the giant numbers at each, near each tower, so it seems different, it's probably a good idea to do something different to identify which tower is which, but I'm just having a hard time with that right now, so.
Correct, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the applicant, overall, I think this is, you know, a good rebranding of the signs, especially in contrast to the size of the building, so, you know, the height is really proportionate to the building. You know, I did have similar comments from Mr. Pagner, said, it's interesting how this just, it's like the numbers are just a number, and it's interesting, but, you know, I don't know if it's, like, it's appropriate, but it looks, it's interesting, so, those are the only comments I really have.
Thank you, Van. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to comment that I love the numbers.
Okay.
I love the sculptural aspect of them, and I think it's a little playful, which is kind of fun for a building that doesn't come across as very playful until the lights go on at night. So, I really like it, but I just want a little more detail about the signage that you're doing?
Okay.
Because I think the package is lacking in a little bit of information regarding the type of lighting you're using?
Sure.
And what you're actually going to be looking at when the lights are on, for the illuminated signs?
It's just going to be illuminated from within, so, let's see here, on the first A1-
Yep.
-there will probably be the metal piece where the mark is sitting, it will probably come off a little bit, so the LEDs will be behind it, so it will glow from behind.
So, there's a slot for tenants' names?
Correct.
And so, the expectation is that those names would also have a halo effect on the sides, or what would that look like?
I'm not sure of the full design of it, because it's still being worked out, but as far as it being lit, it could possibly be lit from behind each block, so it would give you a halo effect, as you were saying.
That would be ideal, I think, and it really is what you're seeing more and more, that you have this kind of subtle-
Yeah.
-lighting scenario, but the actual plexi surface is going to glow.
Right, and then the crosspoint letters on the side will be cut out in plexi as well, and they'll glow from behind.
But it would be a backlit kind of scenario?
It would be backlit, it would be within the sculpture, within the monument itself.
Yep.
So, you won't see the lighting from the exterior, it'll be all internal.
And we're talking about LED lighting inside, and we're matching the width currently on-site for the monument sign, it's just growing in height, so it's not going to be any additional obstruction that currently exists at the site.
Correct.
But showcase is really small in comparison to crosspoint, we've really changed the scale of things here. I think it's beautiful, by the way, I really like it.
So, yeah, we still need to go with showcase and have them, you know, maybe there's, that portion will grow a little bit, but-
I'd like to make it a condition that the tenant signs be halo-edged lit only?
Okay.
Okay, I think that that would be a great thing to have. So, if we could just go to the rest of the signs, especially sign two, are we going to be doing the similar thing with the tenant signs? Do we have, again, an interest in lighting the tenant names on the sign? I assume these are slots for future tenants, is that what we're looking at?
Correct, so these are metal surface slots, which can be branded to Verizon, or whomever else is in the building, and they can have their name listed on-
And we can do the same thing with the raised letters, that would be edged lit, as far as a halo kind of effect?
Right, if it was lit, it would be haloed from behind.
Beautiful, okay. And then, what are you doing with the numbers? Is there any lighting on the numbers itself?
No number, no lighting within.
Okay.
On that.
It's a very nice scheme, very nicely done. I'm glad you didn't enlarge the footprint, because I was worried about the size of the footprint there, so it's quite nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Gary?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question about the signs on both Industrial Ave and Chelmsford Street, if they're going to be enclosed, so there's no side panel exposure for lighting, facing onto the street side, all the LED channel lighting would just be on the facade of the sign, correct?
I'm not into how the sign is actually built, but it will be all enclosed, it will be an internally lit sign. So, there's probably a panel that will come off if it needs to be changed.
On the facade of the sign, nothing on the side panel that's going to cause lighting to come out to the side of the street?
Nothing on the side, no, no, only on the front facing.
I do agree with my colleague, I am glad that the footprint is staying its width, I understand going higher to the sky in scale of the building. I know the property owner over there is making a large commitment to the property and to the city, which is, it's our gateway to the city. As it relates to the numbers, are these going to be freestanding, are they going to be fixed to the building? What's the-
No, it would be freestanding, it would be, there would be concrete that would be poured for support, and again, these are only concepts, so, you know, we can all judge, the design hasn't been vetted out yet.
How far up the building will they be freestanding?
They'll be closer towards the sidewalks, so I don't know how far, we haven't marked them out yet.
Okay, yeah, it's a great marketing plan, it's definitely going to bring some exposure, some modern light to that space. I'm glad to hear, as I'm sure my colleagues are on the LED piece, I mean, we're moving in that direction in lighting, so I don't have a general overall concern on the size of the numbers, it kind of gives a better indication on which building is which, I have gone to the wrong building, so I think that's a good plan, so, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I share the same sentiments with fellow board members, I mean, it's a great project that's going on, the rebranding, the total rebranding, and putting some color and life back into the area itself. I mean, the numbers, I actually, at first was, the numbers were a little like, whoa, it's kind of very concerned about that, but they've kind of grown on me a little bit, so I think they've seemed pretty nice, so, I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I had a couple of questions, whether the other board members already covered those. Now, I guess the only thing I'll add is, we talked about some conditions that Dennis described with you, and you seem to be in concurrence with that, so you're also with the conditions?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Again, you know, this is the second time you've been before us, I think we as a board see a good finished package here. Obviously, we've been privileged to see what's currently up there, and it looks really great, so hopefully it'll assist with that site in general. So, we're doing both a special permit and variances, correct, Joe?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, so we'll need two separate votes on each of these, so I could have a motion, please, on the special permit?
One sec, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add one other condition, I just noticed, even though you stated that it would be LED, that it's not listed in your package that was submitted?
What is that?
I just noticed that I don't see any reference to the internal light source being listed as LED in the package that was submitted?
Okay.
So, I'd like to make it a condition that the internal light source be LED, is that all right?
No problem.
Okay, great. Okay, I thought you covered that already, but, okay, that's fine, okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I may, just wanted to ask a quick question again about the numbers.
One sec, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add one other condition, I just noticed, even though you stated that it would be LED, that it's not listed in your package that was submitted?
What is that?
I just noticed that I don't see any reference to the internal light source being listed as LED in the package that was submitted.
Okay.
So I'd like to make it a condition that the internal light source be LED, is that all right?
No problem.
Okay, great.
Okay, I thought, I thought you covered that already, but, okay. That's fine. Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, if I may, just wanted to ask a quick question again about the numbers. In the package itself, they're mentioned as, as, you know, the concept design and not final, so I'm wondering, or asking if we could maybe condition the, the numbers, number part of the application either coming back to us, are they going to be on a concrete pad? Are they going to have a spotlight? You mentioned they wouldn't be lit internally, but would spotlights be set up in the grass, you know, shining on the numbers? I'm just still unclear exactly what we're doing with.
No, it's just more of a directory sign that's kind of indicating what each tower, where each tower is. It may not be a number, it may just turn into a monument similar to what we have here, just etched out with the number three, or the other ideas with coming up more of the mark, and, and indicating it that way with the T, the Tower Three, and Tower Two, Tower One. So I'd be happy to give you more direction as it's developed, and I'll be gladly to share that with Judy and Joe, and send that along if you'd like, as it gets developed more than the sculptures.
Okay, thanks. So can we approve this as is, Joe, even if this may not be what the three numbers look like? Again, Dennis spoke much more eloquently about how much he likes the numbers. I mean, I like the numbers, I just wanted to be clear about the size, how they would be resting, you know, on the grass, whether they would be lit or not, and so on.
Yeah, if the board would like to, you can put a condition to have the final design of the numbers signage come back to the board for final approval, or you could have the applicant go over it with staff. It's up to you.
Okay, that would be fine with me, then, to just go over it with, with staff, but I'll leave that up to the rest of the board.
Where the signs aren't internally illuminated, are they required to have a special permit or, or variance?
Technically, right now, there would be a var, under the variance, because they're oversized for a freestanding sign, because they're eight by four, so they're 32 square feet.
They're oversized, okay.
Requirement's 30.
So maybe a condition would be something to the effect that the, that the building identification number signage would be subject to review if the signs substantially deviate from what was presented tonight? Would that make sense?
That's fine.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I agree, as long as we just have a final, just to have a final review. I agree with Michael as far as just placement, pad, standalone, don't want to approve illumination if they're not going to be, don't want to have us half a dozen spotlights out there as well, so I can certainly see that point, so I would just make a notation in that condition that a final plan be submitted to the board for review, and through DPD for approval, perhaps that's something we can do through email, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, that's fine with me, I guess my only thing at this point is, we got three conditions now?
Yes.
Okay, and are all three carrying with both special permit and variance, or is there one that's with the variance? Are there two with the special permit and three with the variance?
Excuse me.
I thought I heard something about just the variance on the lettering.
So the lettering, the lettering is only the variance correct for the size? Yep, special, where it's standing true on the, it's not affected by the special permit.
Okay, right. So Joe, are the conditions following with both the special permit and the variance, just so unclear?
Yes, Mr. McCarthy, I could kind of hear him over there, they'll have conditions that carry with the special permit and conditions that carry with the variance, so there'll be one condition that's only tied with the variance, and well, the lighting and the LED requirements will carry with both the special permit and the variance, there'll be one extra condition on the variance.
I think so, I think I got it.
Okay, all right. All right, any other comments before we go to a motion here? Hearing none, could I have a motion, please, on the special permit?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2014-066 for a special permit at 900 Chelmsford Street for internally illuminated signs with the following conditions. That any additional illuminated tenant signs be added to the sign, one and two would be edge lit, that all internally illuminated light sources be LED. Yeah, that's it.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
With the edge lit, are you also assuming that the crosspoint be edge lit as well, or is that able to be cut out and illuminate?
So I'm specifically mentioning tenant signs.
Just tenant signs?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you're, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, could I have a, could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Palio?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Perrin?
Approved with conditions.
Okay, next motion will be for the variance, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a variance for ZB 2014-066 for 900 Chelmsford Street, and the variance is for the height of freestanding signs and the signed face of the sign with three more uses with a face of over 50 square feet, and this applies to five signs at the site with the following conditions. That any additional tenant signs on the sign one and two be edge lit, that the internal light source for the internally illuminated signs will be LED, and that the building identification slash number signs, if they receive any deviation from what's presented tonight, that they be subject to review again at this board.
Okay.
They didn't ask yet.
Oh, sorry.
All right. You okay with those conditions also?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I was just writing.
I saw you right in the way, I want to make sure you didn't want to pull back. All right, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. McCarthy?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Palio?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Peck?
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Perrin?
Approved with conditions.
Okay, met both the special permit and the variance, I wish you the best of luck with the final product.
Great.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
And I just wanted to add that the LED lights on the top of the building will be complete by the end of the week. So one side is complete now, and the other side is in process, and the mark should be going up by the end of the year on both sides, so keep your eye out for them.
Yep.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. All right, our next matter before us is ZB 2014-68. The petition's a special permit and variance. The applicant is Judith Ryan, the property's located at 152 Butman Road. The petition, the applicant is seeking special permit and variance relief to construct a second story on an existing garage, which shall exceed the accessory structure height requirement already located within the site and rear setback requirement. The petitioner is seeking relief under section 4.35, 441 and 454 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Richard Leclerc for the petitioners, Peter Ryan and Judith Ryan. Peter Ryan is with me tonight. The Ryans are 36 years living in this home, and they seek to add a second floor to their existing garage to add a, storage and add, more importantly, a fitness room. This lot is unique in the sense that it is slightly narrow, but very deep. Their house has a very large front yard, a fairly short backyard with this existing garage tucked around into the left-hand corner. It is to add an existing, a second story over the existing footprint, and it's built and designed in such a way that the gable end faces the street and attempts to, you know, give a sense of a carriage house or a, or a barn. I think this, I understand this part of Lowell has a number of carriage houses and barns in the rear, it's an older section of town, and I think that the design fits in. I believe that we meet the criteria for the, the topographical hardship, because it is a narrow lot, this is, not only is the garage too close, the existing garage too close to the lot lines, but the house, I don't think, meets the current side yard setbacks, so there's no real other place to put this additional living space for these residents of this home for 36 years, but to go up over this garage. The area to the right of the garage in the back is a nice little landscaped grassy area, which gives them kind of their private living area, and it's kind of enclosed in spruce trees, and it's a private, you know, so it is that private area. So sideways expansion really wasn't an option for them. I do believe that it, I don't think it will derogate from the zoning, as I say, there is that topographical situation where we have the narrowness of the lot, and I don't think that it derogates from the general conditions of the neighborhood, or will be substantially more detrimental. I noticed that we did have in a Butters list, in this case, of 44 people, my client spoke to his neighbors, did not have any negative feedback from them, in fact, had mostly positive feedback, and I noticed that most didn't, no one spoke, came to speak, to speak against it. So based on that, I'd ask that the board approve both the variance and the special permit. I will freely admit this is my first visit to Lowell, to the zoning board, so I believe we needed both that relief, because it is non-conforming as to setbacks to the rear and side, and we are expanding that, I did include a request for a special permit in addition to the height variance and the variance to allow us to put on the second floor for an accessory structure. That is our presentation in a nutshell.
Okay, a couple of things, so you mentioned the petitioner's been there for 36 years, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. And the intention for the space, I heard storage, I heard exercise room, and then I also heard a, a living space, so.
No, well, I consider, I consider, no, there's no actual living space, I consider the exercise room to be space to do it, but it's purely for, it's not an apartment, no bathroom, no facilities, purely storage, purely exercise room. I misspoke when I said that, mischaracterized it.
That's okay, so I got to ask questions?
Oh, absolutely.
I do listen once in a while. Okay, so, and the intention of building up, is the roof going to be raised, what's the intention here?
A new second story, the builder, John Happy, is here with us today, a new, a new second, there's no second floor now, the existing roof will be taken off and a new second floor installed, and a new roof put in with the windows, windows, and then those kind of barn-type doors up the top to give it a little more architectural feature.
Okay. Okay.
I think it is, you know, this, this structure will be well shielded from people to the rear, there are some very tall spruce trees existing already, so I think, I don't think, and due to the nature of the house being so far back from the street, it gets some shielding from the street by the structure in front of it, so I don't think visually from the street, I think it will look great, because most of it will be concealed anyway by the existing home.
Right, because I know to the rear of the property, it's pretty much open space, if I remember right, and I think there's a fence that runs around the home on Eastview Street there, that's on the corner of Eastview and Ridge Road, if that's the other street, I'm trying to remember what the name of it is.
Loose.
Loose, yeah. I think it's Ridge. Okay. Yeah, and one of the, one of the things I, I noticed when I drove by, and I think even on the plot plan, it kind of shows that, that the, the main structure and the garage, and I think it's, I mean, if you look at the shape of the lot, but both, both structures are kind of angled, now, obviously, the homes and the garage were built many, many years ago, but to your point about the land area, that's just one observation I made. In fact, I know when I drove by the first time, I noticed the narrowness of the driveway as you especially come along the home there, and then it, you know, opens up to where the garage is. Okay, anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public, anyone here like to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor? In favor, sir?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
My name is Christopher Kennedy, and I'm a resident on Parkview Avenue. In the area that we are in, Belvedere, we do have a lot of small lots, and the only way, if you want to effectively increase your area, is you have to go up, and that's the issue, and I think, I think it's really good for the neighborhood to do something of this nature.
Okay.
I think it'll encourage if somebody else has an issue later on, that they can feel it, well, at least we can go up a little bit.
Yep.
And add a story. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor? In favor, in favor? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed, anyone like to speak in opposition? Opposition, opposition? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. I'm going to open it up to the board, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of questions and a couple of comments again. The Development Services submitted their, their comments and asked us to question any, any utilities that might be installed, because there's nothing in the, in the plan, so I want to get clarify.
Just would be electrical line, a circuit for lights.
Okay. Joe, so is that, does that need to be spelled out in the application, or just made as a condition?
If the board wanted to condition it, that, that could be appropriate, it was just because it wasn't spelled out in the application, that was why we had the question, so if the board wanted a condition, you could do so, it's not necessary, but it is an option for the board.
We certainly have no objection to a condition that we not put in plumbing, so we're true to our word on that.
Okay, thank you. The other couple of comments I had, I guess I'd say one is certainly in favor of, of building up, is the, the garage, we'll call it on the Shanley property, which is on, is it Eastview? Because of the, the slope, that garage, even though it's one-story high, seems to be almost like a two-story building if I were in the petitioner's yard and looking up, up towards Eastview, so I don't, I don't see the, the proposed increase in height as an issue in that regard. I am actually concerned about the trees that are in, in that corner, it seems like they're both, although they're on the Butters properties, may actually be overhanging, it looked like, and again, I didn't go on any properties on Saturday when I, when I went by there, but it seems like at least one of the trees could potentially, or two of the trees that I saw, could potentially be damaged during the, the building of the, of the second story, but I don't know, maybe they're not as close as they looked from the street.
I think I can answer that. I understand what you saw visually, but it's not even going to be close, okay?
Again, I meant, like I said, I, I didn't go on your property or any of the Butters, it was just the view from, from your street, and then when I went around the block and looked through the, the backyard of, of one of your neighbors, so, okay. And then the other question I had is just, it is a large house, and, and the second issue that Development Services brought up was just to, to try to, again, define or clarify the hardship in needing to build, you know, to put an exercise room above the garage when you, when you have a two-story home, and I assume with a basement, and, and again, it's, we don't need to know how many people live there, how many rooms are being used, but just to, you know, better clarify the hardship.
Well, I, I, I think that it is easy to clarify, I think that, you know, having this away from the home and the noise associated with it is pretty important to probably more Mrs. Ryan than Mr. Ryan, being he's the one who will be using the room the most, but I think having it away and, and having it out of the house, I think is important to Mrs. Ryan to kind of separate that, and they can use the additional storage for items as well.
Okay, thank you.
You can't use the basement.
And, and, and the basement apparently is just-
It's an old house with an old basement. You know, it has the, the asbestos pipes coming down, and there's just no ceiling height there to do anything down in the basement.
Okay, thank you, no further questions or comments, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Van?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I had a chance to drive by that, that home, and it's, you know, it's a nice, nice home, nice neighborhood, and, you know, I, I think this, this new addition on top of the garage can, can be added without any adverse effect to the neighborhood or the surrounding neighbors, and, you know, overall, I think, I think this is a good project, and it's always a good thing when you can get your neighbors to come and support it, so, you know, I, I support the petition, and I wish you the best of luck, sir.
Thank you. Van? Dennis?
Through-
Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. It's very well taken care of property, and it does present itself very well, and the garage is certainly pushed back far off the road, but I just want to understand the height that you're building. The current garage seems to have maybe a 10 or 12-foot height, maybe?
The, the, the ceiling height inside the existing garage is more like eight feet. And, sure. Actually, maybe the builder can give us a bit better sense of that.
If you want to just introduce yourselves, sir.
Yes, my name is John Happy, from JT Happy Builders, and I'm going to be building this, this for Mr. Ryan. Some of the weight machines he's put in there, and we went out to a friend of mine that owns a plant, a plant of fitness, and they're all in the range, some of the ones that he wants, the thorough fitness one, it actually has a height of nine foot three from the top. Works away different angles, but nine foot three is at the top. It won't go any higher, and now we have the roof at 10, I mean, the ceiling joists at 10 feet. So the reason it's at 10 feet is it, the machine is nine foot three that we take apart, we put together up there. The most, biggest reason, right off the top of my head, is I just did it to my own house, and it, I had to take ceiling down. Thank you.
Okay, and so, right now, it's a 16-foot restriction, and we're looking for relief to go to 20?
26.
26. And Joe, that's measured not to the eve, but that's to the ridge? Is that correct?
Correct, the average height.
It's the average height?
With grade.
Okay, so I'm trying to do the math here. What, what do you think we have to the ridge that would require us to go? Because it looks like we have, I, I don't mean to be tedious here, but it looks like we have, what, eight foot six plus 10 foot eight?
Which is 19.
19 two, yep. And then?
It's 19, it's 19, it's, it's six inches at what?
Oh, oh, I, I thought it was 10 foot eight. I'm sorry, it's 10 foot six.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Okay, so that's 19, and then we're looking for an additional eight feet above that to go to the ridge.
That, the, the...
I'm sorry, seven feet above that to go to the ridge.
The, hold on for one second.
Is that what we're looking for?
That is what we're looking for, and I'll, and I'll be frank with you. When we, when I did this and the plans came over, that never seemed high to me as well. However, my engineer, when I filled out the application, is, is that, that is his calculation of the height.
So I think Joe just said that it's average, or that the...
Right, so if you're talking seven to the peak, you're really talking probably about three and a half, yeah.
Three and a half. So you'd be at 22 foot six.
Where we calculate height, yeah.
So the variance would be for 22 foot six. Do you understand what we're saying? So it's not, it's not to the ridge. If the ridge is at 26?
Yes.
You don't have to get a variance for 26.
Okay, okay. I, I assume that you needed it to the actual outside height to the ridge, okay.
It's for halfway between the eve and the ridge.
Okay.
Which would be only 22 foot six.
Okay.
So would you be okay with modifying this to a variance for 26?
If that's the way the variance is written, it permits the ridge of 26, that would work because we did it to, to the ridge.
Correct, that's the way the, the city measured building height.
That's, okay.
Okay.
Terrific.
Then we would fit within it. I, I took it to the outside number to make sure I wasn't...
Good.
Sure, okay.
Good. And now I understand how that room upstairs is getting used, because I was looking at that dimension saying, what are you doing up there? But I understand that equipment does come in those heights that you do need to have in order to make it work, so. And you do have a, I mean, it's, it's better to go above the garage than go, than go on a third level on the house and make it even go taller, so I, I think that that's a better option here on the site, so.
Plus, I think it would, it would, you know, completely take away from the character of the house.
It would, it would destroy the house, correct? So, and I like the fact that this is placed back on the lot here, and it seems like the neighbors are in agreement that this is a worthy cause here, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Gary?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I was at the site yesterday and did walk the property line. I did have the pleasure of meeting Mr. Ryan and going through the, the plan. As it relates to the trees I had from, from the sidewalks point of view, I did have the same concern with the green space, but once you set yourself in the back, just from a visual standpoint, I don't think there'll be any issues with that, and I, I think the builder may concur with that. Did have the opportunity to speak to a neighbor who's been at that property for same, a fair amount of time, all over 20 years, and he had, he had no concerns or issues with what was going on. I, I do look at the plan, and I think the barn doors adds eloquent peace to the property in historic fashion with, with the city, going, going back to, to the value of, of the barn, the barn looks. I do give Mr. Ryan credit moving forward with the gym area. I, I as well have a 100-year-old house and know what a basement looks like in these older homes, and I, I think this is, is a great project. I think, you know, the garage being set back as it is, I think that the minimal, there's a minimal disadvantage here, and I think that, you know, moving forward, it's a wonderful product, and I, I wish you the best of luck over there in your home, being a resident of 36 years. Holds a lot of weight, so, good luck, sir.
Thank you, Gary. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also had a chance to check out the property earlier this weekend, and seems to fit in, the project itself seems to fit in with the basic character of the, of the neighborhood, and the garage being set back where it is seems to, like I said, it can only build up, it can't go anywhere further, so it seems to be a very worthwhile project, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Couple of comments and a question. The, the fence that runs between your property and Mr. Cox next door, is that Mr. Cox's fence or is that your fence?
Yes, it was, it was put up by the previous owner.
On your, on your lot or Mr. Cox?
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the, the fence in between John Cox and me? We don't know. That fence was there before I bought the property 36 years ago, and Mr. Cummings isn't alive anymore, ask him, who was the previous owner, but I, I just don't know. I mean, you're talking about the, the metal fence that goes in between?
Yeah.
I honestly don't know if whoever owned my house put that fence up, or whoever owned John Cox's house put that fence up. I just don't know.
Okay. Well, it was just, because I noticed the fence pretty much ends a little bit off the front of your garage there, so I didn't know if that was yours or Mr. Cox that's next door to you. And as I, the other observation I made, your, your home, if we look at the, this gentleman kind of reminded me of it, but if I take a look at that, that street, you know, a lot of the homes are lined up, yours is definitely set back further, which kind of makes sense how your garage got pushed back, and it's almost in alignment with some of the other garages from your other neighbors, so that's not, I think it's how it's laid out on your lot, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't even see that if you were looking at it. Plus, you don't have, you don't own the lot behind yourself, which seems to be that Ridge Road, that was ever on Eastview and Ridge Road, seems to have that back portion. And there's a fence that runs behind your garage also there, so it's pretty much boxed So I think if we take a look at, you know, as far as hardships and the, you know, the structure itself, I believe you've met the prerequisites of relief that are required just based on, A, you know, topography, B, how the home was pretty much set up, and then the garage was established many, many years ago. So I, I believe I heard a condition that the counselor would agree to is, so no heating or plumbing would be included as part of this remodel, I'll guess I'll call it, is that correct?
No, 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 no gas or, or oil heating and no plumbing. There may be a electric baseboard heat.
Electric heat.
Yeah.
Or an electric air conditioner, depending how hot he works out.
He's probably in better shape than I am. Okay, any other comments from any other board members as far as conditions or comments in general? I, I think the intention of the petition is, has been explained, and I believe, you know, as far as relief that needs to be granted can be granted without derogating from the intention of the zoning. So we need to take two votes here. We got a special permit, and we also have the variances. Are you okay with what we're voting on here? Dennis?
I just want to make one correction on the variance to modify the height listed as 26 feet to be 22 foot six, which is the median height requirement that would give you exactly what you drew, but is measured to the average of the roof elevation there.
All right, so could I have a motion first on the special permit?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2014-068 for 152 Butman Road for a special permit for relief for the rear and side yard setback from a five-foot requirement to two foot eight feet in the rear and two foot three on the side yard lot with the following conditions, that no gas or oil heat be provided and no plumbing be provided in the garage.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey.
Approve with conditions.
Mr. McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Mr. Pallia.
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Peck.
Approve with conditions.
Mr. Perrin.
Approve with condition.
Okay, so could I have a motion, please, on the variance?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a variance for ZB 2014-068 for 152 Butman Road, and the variance is for a height variance for, to vary from the limit of 16 feet to the proposed 22 foot six inches with the following condition, that the garage and room above be constructed without gas or oil heat and that no pump, plumbing be provided to the new structure.
Could I have a second, please?
Second motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey.
Approve with conditions.
Mr. McCarthy.
Approve with condition.
Mr. Pallia.
Approved with conditions.
Mr. Peck.
Approve with conditions.
Mr. Perrin.
Approve with condition.
Okay, Mr. Leclair and Mr. Ryan, been approved for both the special permit and variance.
Thank you very much.
Wish you best of luck. Mr. Kennedy, thank you for coming, speaking. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, our next business is under other business. This is the minutes for approval from November 26, 2014. Did everybody have a chance to review them or any comments? Okay, hearing none, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the meeting November 26, 2014.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bailey.
Approved.
Mr. McCarthy.
Approve.
Mr. Pallia.
Approved.
Mr. Peck.
Approve.
Mr. Perrin.
Approved.
Okay, so this is our last meeting for 2014. Want to wish everybody happy holidays and New Year's coming up, and so, Joe, next meeting will be January 12, 2015, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And, Joe, thank you to you and your staff this year for your support, and that's it. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Could I have a second?
Second.
So move.